I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you all to another doubleheader meeting where we have a voting meeting initially, we have a few important items, and then we'll proceed on to the works of our papers. First item would be Dr. Himberger.
My mic's not working. This is item 1A. This is an assessment, decision, resolution. I move the board authorize an appeal to the Berks County Court of Common Pleas regarding the assessment decisions by the Berks County Assessment Appeals Board on the property located at 4500 Perkeomen Avenue and 4500A Perkeomen Avenue, which is owned by Exeter Community Company, and further resolve that Solicitor John Walzney and administration officers take all necessary action to protect the district's interest in this area.
I have second. Motion and second. Is there any discussion?
Do we know what property that is?
Bosco's.
Bosco's. Is that the partner store that distribution's at?
Yes, the partner store.
Ready, what is it? Ready and Walms or something like that?
Ready and Walms.
Is it for the whole mall or just for that?
It's for these two parcels. And basically, it was compared to the appraisal for the other Bosco's and it's in the executive content. That was also appealed a few years back.
It was, that was a significant, I mean, we lost a lot of property value with that, didn't we?
We did back in 2009 and Doug Haring, who is a certified general appraiser, attended the hearing with us and after comparing the two Bosco's, one at Fifth Street Highway, one at Perkeomen Avenue, this assessed value, Perkeomen Avenue, and market value are clearly understated compared to Fifth Street Highway, so he feels that it's important to appeal it because it's just not fair, what the board did.
So, again, do you know what they're trying, how much they're trying to devalue their property as far as assessment?
Well, the board of assessment, the county reduced it by 1,354,600, or a loss of 43,600 in school real estate taxes.
And must they justify that or they just go in there and say, this is now, you know?
They come in with an appraisal and the board hears them out and they, three-member board, and they make the decision.
So John is going to?
We will be filing the necessary paperwork and most likely, you know, there's pre-trial hearings where you discuss with the other side and possibly reach a compromise.
Any further discussion? All in favor of having John represent us at the hearing, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Himberger. Your recommendation.
Part A, I move that the board of school directors approve the following action from October 18th, 2016 regarding the resignation of Diane Ward.
I have second discussion.
She's staying at the position that she was.
Any further discussion? All in favor of rescinding the action, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve or ratify the following appointments listed under Part B, number one, certificate of staff and support staff 1 through 3.
Second.
I have motion and second discussion. Are you none all in favor of the appointments, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Part C, I move that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following requests for change of status for support staff numbers 1 through 3.
Second.
I have motion and second. No discussion. All in favor of changes in status, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Part D, staff conferences. I move that the board of school directors approve the staff conferences listed under Part D, number 1 through 3.
I have second.
Second.
Motion and second and discussion.
Behavioral self-regulation mandatory for a new leader? Just her job.
Will he establish his occupationals? Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Now we're beginning the workshop. I would like to announce that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel issues. As soon as I switch over to the other agenda, you can begin. Are there any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Please, if you'll come forward, then fire yourself.
My name is Robert H. Miller, Jr. I live at 412 Grant Street. I attended your last meeting and I addressed a concern about the 40th Street Connector Bridge. At that time, a lot of the board members were not aware of the master plan draft of the township. I could see that that was definitely a situation, so I'm back tonight to find out if there's consensus among the board to support and actually fund the 40th Street Connector Bridge.
I understand your concern, Mr. Miller, but there is nothing before this board concerning that. Before we could take a position, we'd have to hear any arguments for or against it. Certainly discussing committing money, we have no request for money, so it's a non-issue as far as we're concerned at this time.
My research since the last meeting, sir, was the fact that Penn Buck is not having funding to put against this. The county has no funding to put against this. The borough of St. Mars has no money to put against this. The two entities that are left, like the township and the Exeter Township School Board, so my question would be-
But there is no proposal before this board at this time, Mr. Miller.
Exeter Township's future plan will lock in as the plan on January of 2017. That will be the plan. So for the future, for the next five, 10, 15, and 20 years, that plan will remain on the bridge. My point of contention is, why have a plan that you cannot financially support for the foreseeable future on the plan? So I'm in an attempt right now to remove that and every entity that I can, the actual plan itself, but there's no issue whatsoever.
Mr. Miller, there's also a road that goes from Home Depot down to Lorraine Road-
Yes, sir.
-on the master plan.
Right.
No one has asked us for any money there either. We have no position on that road. That's a township function. It has nothing to do with the school district, so we are, I think the code says that we are to be consulted on it, but there has been no, there is no issue, sir. So we can't have a position on no issue.
My historical situation here, sir, says that the township school board has had a position and has spent money to pass the study of the bridge.
And that was in the past and that is no longer an issue before this board. If the township brings it up, we'll study it again, but we can't take an issue, we can't take a position on something that isn't there.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Yeah, Bob, the last, the last time we went through this, the bridge died without our position at all and it died because there was no money by the county to put forth.
I've already done that research, sir.
Yeah, and I really, and I really believe that that, I don't believe that situation changed.
So the lack of funding basically takes the bridge out of the works. Thank you, sir.
Any further public comments? Dr. Slapper, can you tell us about Jackson Wall?
Good evening. So we always talk about how our SPP scores really don't matter and all this stuff, but it does come to the forefront when it makes the newspapers. And when you see, you know, you look at it and see how your score did, and it's kind of a really important thing. I was really expecting us to do much more poorly than we did. I was quite elated with our score that we had at 77.2. We had a group of students in fourth grade when they were in third grade. Every child that moved into our building was a third grader. We rounded with 27 kids in the room. It was bad chemistry. It was, kids just didn't get along well together. It was, there were too many kids in the room. And I, and then went to fourth grade and we split them up a little bit and did some things and I was really pleased with the outcome of what our students did. I think our run of distinguished school honors is over this year. We'll try to get it again next year, but again, I'm really happy with what we did and part of our score. We're at the top of, very top of the green, just about into the blue. There's a big colors for us here in public space, so. ESL students this year, we had, all the district ESL students came to Jackson Wall and there've been a couple of sunnites for it. We're happy to have the children. There's some, some concerns with blessing and some children who were students at Jackson Wall that were relocated to a tenant series outside of Jackson Wall or to Watten Creek. That's, that's a new development in our, in our school. And the kids are really, the children themselves have found a home there. They're very happy there and they like their teacher and things are going well, but there are, there are some concerns with it. Investigations math, the teachers are working hard at implementing the new version of investigations math. I thank you again for the time that you provide to them or professional learning communities so that they have time to work on those things because they really value that. You know, our teachers, we need that time to kind of get together and just kind of decompress, have time with each other to get, to get some, some plans laid out and to hammer out any problems that they're experiencing in their classroom or with the curriculum. It, it is valuable time. I know sometimes it's, you'll find the odd case of what that's being abused, but I can honestly say that the means that we have and the means our teachers run are valuable and productive. So thank you for that time. I have observations to walk through. I have a lot to do this year. Kind of falls into the situation where we hire a guy in Scottsore, she needs to get twice a year. We hire a third, a third grade teacher needs twice a year. And now you've got a couple more people in it. All of a sudden, you have like a really little bit to do one year and then a whole lot to make for one. We met the whole lot this year, so I'm really kind of busy with that. Our fourth grade classroom, we had, we had a run of bad luck. We had a perfect storm that worked against us. We hired someone to teach ESL classrooms for the whole year who resigned. We hired a long-term sub shortly after that who was right before school was supposed to start, who resigned. They both resigned via full-time contracts, which we can fault them. So we hired the third girl. She came in and she started teaching after the school year had started when we posted it and went out there and found someone. And so we had a substitute teacher in there, a day-to-day substitute who we had emergency certification for. And so when we hired this girl, she's officially approved to the board. She's able to start. She gets on board. She works a couple of weeks and she resigns. So now, many times after she was there for those few weeks, well, maybe it might have been longer, it may have been, yeah, but two weeks she resigned, but she gave the students, but she didn't have to. Gave the students notice to get a replacement. So for that whole month, the girl who was, the lady who was at ESL, we moved to a long-term position in fourth grade for a teacher who was out, medical leave. So we thought we'd have her there, then in that position until she came back. And when this girl resigns, there's no place, nobody else left, we have to pull her out of there and tend to put her back in ESL because she is emergency cert. And then we had to put a new, a new teacher again in that fourth grade position. So I, I am in the process of writing a letter. I already wrote one up ahead of throwaway. We printed out labels and everything, you know, official letters to talk to the parents. I'm going to invite them into the fourth grade class. I'm, it's kind of a little bit, a little bit hectic up there right now. We had a teacher to start the year for roughly a month. We had a long-term sub, well, not a long-term sub, but a day-to-day for a month. We then had a leave where we had another teacher in there for what's going to be a month or maybe more until a regular teacher comes back. And I just feel like we owe those people an explanation. And just so they know how the dominance felt. It wasn't like, we're playing on our part and we can't do much when someone goes, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, unquick. There's not too much you can do with that. So she did it for two weeks, so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with that. We did, we bought new wall mats for the gym. We've been working to spruce the gym up in there. It was looking kind of shabby for a long time and we put some nice posters out, all the sports posters and, and we now bought the APT and money I'd saved from pictures and some money I kind of anned out of. I don't know if she knows that all yet, but it's not much to end with. We, we got the wall mats and they're, they're there and they're a little bit lighter blue than I kind of think that was in picture. They look a little boominish to be honest with you right now. We will get them on the wall. It's gonna be a nice improvement again for the gym because it's used every single night. I mean, like when basketball season starts now, we have the girls cheerleading in the cafeteria. The girls' basketball has, the boys' basketball has it Saturday all day. It's usually, you know, we, the gym teacher was up on the list of repaying him. We're knocking stuff off there. I was taking video of him up there for the Nick Price Memorial Gymnasium when the ladder falls down. But it's, it's looking better all the time and looking forward to getting the mats up there. HVAC is my second career. I, I know way too much about HVAC. That's how I'm gonna start this. I know way too much. On my desk, I have the temperature gun. I have tools that I can do to, to, to regulate the thermostats, to calibrate them. I know far too much, far too much for that. And, and to be honest with you, I, I, you know, I don't come here asking you for anything ever. I don't come up and say, we need this, we need that, this and that. The HVAC system is going down all the time and it's getting worse. These units are antiquated. They're in disrepair. They take one, stuff out of one to repair another. The tubes are old and, and cracking and there's times when literally I spend my whole day taking care of HVAC problems. And I'm not saying one day. We're changing from season to season. There'll be rooms that are squirching. There'll be rooms that are, that there's nothing coming out of. I'm moving the features around. We're putting fans in. We're doing stuff. It's in disrepair. That's odd to say about it. It's, I hope at some point there's something we can do to take some action to make some corrections in the HVAC system because there's days it's 61 degrees in the winter. There's days it's, you know, thankfully we brought the portable chiller in there. That portable chiller at the end of the school when that pipe broke, thankfully it's for that. I mean, and there's still days when, even when the chiller's running like it should, the units don't work in the classrooms. So it's kind of a-
Did that get into the facility study?
Yes, that is in the facility study and we've talked about it before. We'll file recommendations from them at the next meeting, so it's-
Hey, does that order, is that project already on the five-year plan or?
They were included within the next five years. The timing is probably a little different based on what P C B A is finding, that this one is more urgent, the junior higher more urgent than, you know, have it happen the next year or two rather than two or three years.
We hear you.
No, we agree.
Listen, thank you.
Pay attention though because I happen to know the good HVAC man makes more than you do.
I'm waiting for us to show up somewhere. But really, I do know probably too much. And you look in there, it's like, I was gonna take a picture of it for you guys. When you look in there, there's like, oh, these little condensers in there, stoves that run from one to the other. And you literally can't, even if you know one, two, you can't even follow to the other one. And so this guy comes from Siemens. He's the expert. And he'll like take things off that shouldn't be off and pump them up to other ones. So now we have heat. And then he's gone. And then it kind of comes time to put their machine on. And now he's the only guy that knows it where they were, you know? And it's sort of like they have us right where they want us, you know? And, and you can't get so far towards it because it's antiquated and, and so really it's-
As a problem with that system is we're not allowed to make adjustments to it. Siemens has to come in and make adjustments. That's-
I mean, Al does. Al does adjustments to the, you know, calibrate thermostats. And we put the thermostats in, but it doesn't matter if the valves aren't closing, the things aren't working like they should. It's a very complex system and it's kind of just not like it should. Anyway, our building climate is always something I really don't report because it's something that's important. And it's something that we believe in. It's something we all work hard to preserve. And I think it's, has a lot to do with a lot of things that go on in our school. So I think a lot of our success is due to the fact that we realize how important it is to work together, how important teamwork is within our building. It's such a, such an important part for, for the kids that everyone gets along and does their part together that I always include that as, but that's personally important.
Can I ask, just a question about, just a quick question about your comments about SPP scores. And you mentioned that during the last three or five school years, your building was recognized as distinguished.
That's correct.
But you're certain you're not going to be distinguished this year?
Well, I'm not certain, but I kind of think we won.
What, what draws?
Our scores were, our scores were like in the low to mid 80s, literally 83, 84 in that area.
Is there a come off threshold?
Yeah, it's just kind of like around there, like closer.
Top 5% of Title I schools that receive that.
So you'll fall just a little below then?
I was hoping a little bit, you know?
Okay.
I can get a couple more banners to hang up, yeah, but that one, right?
It's a nice distinction.
Joe, who does the calculations? If it's PDE, you got it.
I don't know what you're doing there, but I was so afraid. I got a call from a friend of mine who's a principal and, and he had gotten the scores and he called me. He goes, he really got, he really got hammered, like the scores this year. He's the elementary school principal. He goes, how you doing? He was telling me like what they had years previously and then what they had this year. His scores were like, you know, 84, 82, and this year it went down to, I think it told me 61 or 60. And I was thinking, oh my goodness, this is gonna be a beat down here. And when I saw the 77.2, I was like, nice, that's worth. I'm really happy for everyone. We had a, we, we, I mean, we didn't get to the speech of speech, but we celebrated.
That guy from Siemens working with his stores, that's good.
They got our heat up. Our stores are going down. That's it. Any other questions from anyone?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, sir.
We'll consider three sets of minutes next week in the voting in any meeting. Is anyone, is anyone aware of any changes that have been made in those minutes at this time? There are no changes. We'll go to the policies with Dr. Himberger.
We have several policies that are going to be on the agenda and some are second reading, so they, you've had plenty of opportunity to examine those and others are considered for the first time. The, the policies listed in the agenda, if there are any questions, I'm, I'll be glad to hear through these and we can have some conversations if we feel we need to. I know people have had a chance to read through. The second reading policies, they include triple zero, not zero, zero, one, which has name and classification, authority of powers, which is zero, zero, two, work functions, zero, zero, three, membership, zero, zero, four then is first reading. That's again a new P S B A recommended policy with minor revisions. Zero, zero, four point one is a first reading for us at next board meeting, which is a student representatives to the board committees, which is an existing policy that we do have. Zero, zero, five, organization, first reading. Zero, zero, six, meetings, first reading. Tendons at meetings via electronic communications, the first read. And then we're getting into, outside of the 200s or the triple zero policies into the 200 section. Hazing will be a second reading at the next meeting. That's policy 247. And then some of our financial policies for second reading. Six, 10 purchases subject to bid. Six, 11 purchases budgeted. And six, 12 purchases not budgeted. And then the attachment to six, 26 for procurement of federal programs. So that's the range. And I know there's a lot. Appreciate your patience with these. And anytime you, as you're reading through these, you have issues or questions, I'm more than willing to, you know, stop and take time, any of you. But as we've mentioned before, these have all received a 33rd examination by our solicitor, by the P S B A council, as well as member school districts that have relied upon the services for accurate policies.
No questions?
Yes, sir.
Policy zero, five, double zero, five, lists the various committees. And I looked through there and I cannot remember the last time the district growth and development committee ever met. And a recommendation was made last year by Chair of the Technology Committee that might be of us to combine that with the curriculum meetings since curriculum basically drives the technology requirements anyway. So I was wondering what the board felt about that.
Yeah, I have some thoughts about the curriculum and the technology committee. I really believe the technology committee has to stay in the long run. And the reason I believe that is because it's not only software applications, but it's infrastructure. It's whether or not the servers are working properly, whether or not there's enough capacity. And I think all of those things take time. And I believe they would take time, not that they are not important to curriculum because of, you know, because of delivery, but they certainly are important enough that I believe they need something that's dedicated to that.
I would ask the Chair of the Technology Committee to comment upon how many times you've been concerned about servers and hardware or what do you do in the committee?
Man, I don't really have a concern. I do think that the technology folks are on top of it. And I think that usually when we are, over the three years that I've been on the board and we've been forced to make a decision, it's pretty much been mission critical and we're going to move forward with our curriculum activities. I was just looking through the minutes from our last meeting. As you know, I mean, this is not necessarily a, you know, a technology issue, but we have to replace the phone system this year. It's one of those things where regardless of what I think or the committee thinks, the district doesn't, will not have a functioning phone system after the school year. So, you know, I think they're hardwired together. I mean, I don't have a problem if they stay as separate committees, but I don't think, I mean, I think the direction where we're going as a, as a district in infusing more of our programs with technology, at some point, they'll probably become the same committee. Maybe not yet, but you can't, if you don't have the infrastructure, you can't conduct your curriculum.
I'd like to make a comment about district growth and development. I mean, I, that may not be a meeting or a committee that is active, but you know, I think when we look at facilities planning, which we are right now, and we look at the impact upon student enrollment, potential student enrollment in terms of district growth, and we look at development programs, I, I think this particular committee may become more relevant, you know, in the next few years as we start to look at our facilities and our, and our student populations, particularly in light of some of the comments that were made about the township plan and what they expect for growth in the district. So I, I, I would agree. I don't, I don't know whether it's, it's an active committee, but I would suggest that it might have some function in the future.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Oh, sorry.
Thanks. I was gonna recommend that we rename the, we combine 4 and 9, the facilities with district growth and development and have a district growth, development, and facilities committee, which I think would recognize both what we're currently doing with facilities committee, but also leave out the opportunity that Dave is referring to.
I agree. What would you call that district?
District growth, facilities, and development.
Do you have a future brand?
Whatever way you want to have it better for your-
The way that committee will operate, you should, facilities should appear first in the name.
District facilities, growth, and development.
Yeah, I just was curious about personnel. Yeah, I just was curious about personnel. When was the last time personnel met?
We generally meet as a, during executive session as a board.
Oh, so we're all members of committee? Okay, okay. You know, I'll be honest with you. The reason I ask is because I chaired the personnel committee for the CTC for probably ten years. And the evolution of that was, we were, we as a committee were never involved in anything. And I took that committee and what we did was we sort of realigned it and made sure that we were part of, made sure we were part of certainly, certain hiring procedures, but reviews and, you know, and looked at resumes and that kind of stuff. But we were actually very active. And so, I guess the only point I'm trying to make is some of these committees, they exist, but depending on the style with which we approach, they can either be very active or they can be not active.
I guess in my history, anything that personnel seemed to be, needed review by the entire, the whole board was really interested in those critical issues.
I'd also like to make one other suggestion too. On this, I'm glad you brought this section up because you do have a policy committee now. And I was hoping maybe we could include policy as a standing committee because of the importance of continuing to look at policies and regulations.
Yeah, I would support that. I think that's, I think that's an excellent idea.
So, the thoughts on, let's see, dude, we're going to combine district growth with facilities? Or will technology stand on its own?
I think it makes sense for now, but I do think you maybe should talk over the next year or so about whether or not it makes sense to start, you know, intertwining.
I believe that.
At one point, we had goals or tasks for each of the committees. I don't know where that material is or if it's been lost, but I would think that might be appropriate for this policy.
Almost going to count this.
Yes.
Well, we do have some new language in here that suggests that the board develop an operations guideline to extract duties and establish rules for these areas.
Yeah, and that's what I was referring to, whether it's appropriate to actually include that in the policy. Or you think it's just something that would be a separate?
I mean, operational guidelines, I don't think necessarily have to be included in policies. But I know that we've talked about and we'll start to include administrative regulations as part of our policies. And I mean, that could certainly be part of an administrative, you know, regulations.
I guess my concern, I don't know where the guidelines would be if they're not in the policy.
I can do a search and see where they...
I mean, a policy brings everything together, so we know where to look.
So, it might be, it might be a policy one oh five point one. I mean, we might add a policy one oh five point one that would include operational guidelines.
Any other comments on the other policies?
I'd probably like some information how other districts handle their personnel committee. Because we spend an awful lot of money on our employees and yet we have very little understanding of, of, of anything as far as how they're selected or, you know, or things of that nature. So, I would like to know if we could get some information how other districts handle their personnel committee.
We have more committees, it's been brought up at the I U several times. We have more committees than any other school district in the county.
We do.
We do. And in the past, as is now, so far as personnel are concerned, many things are governed by the contracts. And then as Dr. Bender mentioned, the entire board tends to be interested. But even more importantly, there's, I would question how qualified we are to determine where people go. That is, the administration's function is to manage our people.
No, I'm not saying that we're going to manage anything. I was just, just saying how, I just want to know how other districts do it, that's all. If they do the same as we, and I guess that's the way it goes, but I just would like some input if we could find it. Russ, you said you had a personnel committee at the, you know, where you were for many years. But I don't know, I don't know what other districts do. That's all I was asking. I don't think that's a difficult question to ask.
No, it's not difficult at all to ask. Maybe the problem is...
Do you see a responsibility that the board has that is being perhaps neglected or that we could address?
I don't know. I just, I just know we spend an awful lot of money, you know, with the budget for personnel. And it just, you know, we go through these things and we just, it goes, you know, we see it at the workshop meeting and da da da. But we really, I don't know. There seems to be something missing, has been my opinion.
Dr. Phillips volunteered to check with the other districts as to how they handle this.
And then what we can do is put together our processes, what we go through.
Yeah.
And we're working on getting this type safe.
Any other comments on the policies?
Point of curiosity, now that you've made this study of these policies, is there a policy that deals with not following the policy?
You know, I haven't come across it yet.
No, you know what? It's really interesting, isn't it? If you take it to the state ethics board, they're not interested. Been there, done that.
Right. But I think the board, I mean, has the, I mean, and there probably is some language in here that we'll through that if the board chooses to waive a policy in a particular case, you can do that. And that's not following policy necessarily, but I think you do it consciously, you do it purposefully, and you make decisions for...
No, I'm just talking about if it becomes common practice.
Oh, yeah. But we should all be ourselves accountable for policy that you're concerned about.
All right, moving on. What's this function, Dr. Henberg?
We have, we have a couple of items coming up. We have a two thousand fifteen sixteen audit report that will be accepted for mailing. We'll be considering the hiring of additional teacher for a Laden Elementary School, fourth grade, to reduce class size. We'll be reconsidering something in our budget with the Exeter Community Education Foundation, their request to approve the foundation, the approval from the district to provide funding for an executive director.
Could I, I'd like to comment on that.
Sure, please.
I'm concerned that we'd be spending fifty thousand dollars over limited funds for an employee, a non-employee. And we haven't seen a job description for that position either. I'm not sure the intention of the, of the motion, is the intention that we're going to explore this or do you agree to spend the money?
We got correspondence from Mr. Levan, yes, saying that the foundation is, considering what their future is and how they're going to handle this. They had never gotten a definitive answer from us.
That's correct.
And they would like to have an answer from us this month concerning whether we were willing to provide that support for that particular position.
I seem to recall that when they made that request, that we had some additional requests to them to provide some more information as Dr. Bender pointed out, you know, about job description and maybe some other specific roles and functions of this person before we would consider some, you know, some assistance with funding. And, you know, I don't know whether we've had a conversation that really kind of addressed this.
Anyway, I know he's been in the C U.
Well, he hasn't, I mean, he hasn't said anything more than what we initially discussed, that the position would be going out and meeting with the public and trying to draw up funds and, you know, increase the amount of money that they would do there. At one point, he did have a job description. I don't know if it was the time when it was presented for the fifty thousand dollar request. It was presented initially when it was going to be funded pretty much by the district and taken on as the district employee. But I can surely get back to him and I'm sure they have that on hand, they can give us a copy of the job description. The roles, again, it was more of a community outreach person, that we'd go out and try to get funding to support the education foundation goals. The idea was to actually have somebody out there on a daily basis, going into businesses and asking them for the funding rather than just like one golf tournament and fundraiser here and there. So, they really wanted somebody that would do more work, kind of more...
Now, I thought part of this too, and I may be wrong, was just kind of to get things started for initially and then beyond the first year of support, that the expectation would be that this would be a self-supporting position. This wouldn't be an annual request for fifty thousand dollars. So, it's not real clear in the motion here, as it's, you know, described, that it's something would be limited to...
If you were going to get this contact, we can get those in particular balls.
Job description rules responsibilities and one-time.
I'd like to see...
I'd also like to know what is the recording structure, so who do they actually report to? The other thing that I think you need to be aware of is that if you're going to hire a qualified fundraising professional, you're not going to find one for fifty thousand dollars a year. You're just not. So, I don't, I don't know if this is more community relations versus fundraising, but you know, you're going to have to tie that performance to some sort of metric. If it's going to be community relations, it's going to be a lot harder than if you're going to tie it to, you know, a harder fundraising goal. So, I think that that's, you know, something important. And, you know, I know, I'm generally supportive of it, but I don't think we'd ever approve any position in the district without having more information than we currently have.
It's not clear whether we're contributing fifty thousand dollars as part of the salary compensation.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is you have to be, you know, we have people who are raising money now, so we're going to be starting to compete with our booster clubs, with our APT groups. We're going to start to compete with our athletic director. And you're always in danger of this donor fatigue. So, I think whoever's in that position really needs to be working with all of these groups so that we can, if we're going to fundraise as Exeter Township School District, we really should be doing it as a single entity versus, you know, disparate groups. But that, that's not something that I think is going to happen very easily, so...
Well, the foundation's been going on for how many years now?
A long time. And I agree. I think what we really need to hear from them is precisely what their expectation is that in terms of this post, that raising funds. And, you know, it's true that they're, the community being what it is, there are a lot of groups in school that are going out and asking everybody for donations. And that's, I don't think that's where the foundation should really want to be. I think it should be having a broader or larger view of, you know, what they're going to do. So, maybe they just need to clarify exactly how that particular component of fundraising, fundraising support, what exactly does that mean? And I think they could probably do that, but they just have to be in statement. And this, I gave a point, you know, fifty thousand dollars is going to get you a fundraising person.
I'd be good inviting Mr. Levan to be here or his designated partner to consider a request in my instance question.
I'll try to get them ahead of time, but we'll have somebody here to speak to.
I've seen a number of districts try and do this. It's a tough high. And unfortunately, what happens is you'll get somebody who was in there and will hold a position and collect the money for a couple of years and just spinning their wheels and there's no real worth. I'm very concerned about that. I've also seen models where, you know, the matrix is, your compensation is tied directly to what you're able to produce and, you know, and fundraise and your contributions. And I would be, I could support a position if it was that accountable and it was tied to that kind of revenue stream. But I cannot, I just can't see us investing that kind of money that's, this is, you know, we might have just been out of the way.
I'm wondering whether we should talk to the foundation about this being a district employee where they contribute to the district.
We were at that point already, but they really want this more full-time than...
Wasn't this a matching thing? Where they were going to put up fifty and we were going to put up fifty?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Because I was going to say, then, you know, we're like, we're putting it all up because the fifty that they're going to be putting up was coming here anyway.
Well, did we have a motion before the board last school year? And I thought we voted this down. Can someone look into that for me? Because I think we did talk about this.
I don't believe we voted it down, but even so, that would have no relationship.
No, I think, I think we heard the proposal. I think Mr. Levan is correct. I don't think we ever gave him a definitive answer.
Somebody waiting for stuff back.
Yeah.
So, I'll get him tomorrow. I just think one more thing that we might want to ask them about is the hire, whoever that might be, what is their background as a grant writer? Because there is money out there, but that is, sometimes there's strings attached that aren't worth the money. But at the same time, especially if you're going after state or federal dollars, I mean, it is very labor intensive to go after the funding, but it could be big money. It's usually tied to a program, but if that person...
These opportunities are great for it. I mean, you really need to stay on top of them if you're going to get them. And, you know, because there's a max. And basically, you're in a queue and if you're not early enough in the queue because you didn't apply early enough, you know, you don't get the money.
Who's doing our grant right now? Are it Dr. Davis or you doing some grant money?
Some. Mrs. Klein handles all of our federal programs, which are all grants, Title I, two and three. We have some state grants that come from my office. But in terms of going out and writing for competitive grants, I don't think, I've written for a competitive grant in two years, largely because those competitive grants are issued to districts with much higher socioeconomic diversity than we have. And when you invest, you know, hours and hours and hours collecting that, as you pointed out, it takes a lot of time to put those grant propositions together, put together. And we've often been turned down based on that. I think the last one I put together was for Venus, for our STEM program, which was not awarded for that reason. Honda did the same thing. It's a lot of work that goes into it.
Well, I remember a few years ago, one of our gym teachers got a grant, you know, it's like one of the state...
Well, a lot of our teachers and principals are, again, are very successful with Niscaro and local businesses providing grants. So, yes, in that regard, we have, we have several principals here, all of them.
That's entirely different.
It's all on the board.
And when you get federal money, it's the recording that you have to then, you know, send back to the federal government to establish that you use the money, you know, within the regulations of the grant. It is, I mean, I don't have to tell you guys, but it is an enormous amount of work. We just do...
A good policy there about the reporting procedures for...
And then a lot of this depends on if we're fronting money for the foundation to hire their own person, that's entirely a different story from if we're making it part of the staff.
Right. If we're hiring very...
So, it's, I think a lot of these things will be answered when we have Ken here next week. week.
And I think Dr. Davis brought up a good point, and that is, we're not in the, we're very limited, we're sort of pigeonholed because we don't have the diversity and we don't have the socioeconomic need that a lot of time is one of the major qualifying factors for the big ones that's out there. I know that I had worked on a grant with Redding, and we got, we got a million dollars over two years to do staff development. And, yeah, and most, and most of that was just, you know, based on the disparate profile as opposed to anything else.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? Is part of the request providing the foundation and this particular individual with office space and maybe some level of?
There wasn't a request for office space, but what, when he came into office before this letter, we had talked about like a mutual, like, you know, running things off, having things, having access, yes.
Access to the photo.
Yes, yeah, we continue that relationship. There wasn't a request, but we do have space here.
And to coordinate with the school, I mean, it's nice to have being in physical proximity, so I don't know if we would be willing to consider that, but I think it would be a nice extension of our support for the position if we need to get to that point.
We give office space and rent it for over $50,000, you know, when we go.
I think he also should be prepared to talk about funding decisions, you know, as an investor in that position, who makes those decisions to where the funds that are raised, where do they go? Does the foundation retain that authority, or do we have a say? To this point, he has always said that we would, looking for, like, a lot of his been stendrums, but yes, they're asking for us to tell them what we would need or what we could.
Are we done talking about the foundation until next week? Sort of ran across the hiring of the additional teacher, that's at a one, and based upon request from group teachers deciding the class size. Any additional comments on that?
That's probably too specific, it's just that we're maybe press the, let them say we're going to hire a specific, say, we're going to hire a teacher.
Yeah, my question really has to do with, you know, does this fit into our expectation for class size based upon our current policy? And also, I have a little concern about the disruptive effect of hiring an additional teacher mid-year, you know, and reassigning kids to the new teacher in classrooms. Many, many times, I know districts will consider first maybe adding additional support to classrooms opposed to hiring a teacher. And I don't know how thoroughly that's been considered or examined, but I mean, I think that's a first step that I would suggest prior to actually taking the step to hire a teacher. That would, that would be consistent with our policies.
We will readdress that.
Well, I think the concern is that most of the fourth grades are at, what, 26, 27 students apiece? Is that, that's, I think that's the concern, that the entire fourth grade staff along with their principal is, as I read the letter from the principal. So I would be, I would support such an issue because I, I don't think it's going to be that disruptive, I think the children, you know, they get in very easily to a teacher. We just heard Dr. Slafa saying how many teacher they had to go through because they quit, and I'm sure the teachers, the students there are adjusting. I think children adjust a lot easier than adults do, so I don't have any problem with supporting that teacher here.
I think if Dr. Phillips gets together with Mrs. Cook and walking back, then we can get a solid recommendation from the administration on what should be done there.
We'll be tight, and now we'll have a resolution to the board.
Thank you, sir.
Well, since you brought that up, how's that discussion, how do you see that unfolding? Because if I've heard the way this was, this has bubbled up to the board, was brought to the board by teachers, so how's that, you obviously can't cut them out of that discussion now. I'm not saying you are. No, the discussion has to be with the teachers and Mrs. Cook to see if aides are an option. My understanding was, really wasn't a concern, I mean, it wasn't really part of the presentation. The letter basically states teachers, is the way I understood it.
We discussed it before the, before I met with them the last time to draft the letter. We discussed options prior to our whole group meeting, and one of those options was that they receive additional aid time to support language arts and math, and they considered it.
So the discussion already was taken, has already taken place, and they, they're not open to that as an option, is what you're saying?
They would prefer to have an additional teacher.
Well, I would prefer to be the major, but I think, I think the point is that the administration and you and the teachers should have been.
Another discussion.
A discussion.
And I'll report back to the board.
Yes, sir. Buses.
Continue? Okay, we're at section six, item D, I will be recommending authorization for the advertising goods for vehicles, which will include passenger buses and a student van. And then finally, section six E has, is our applicable budget transfers for the month. And that's all for you.
Any other comments on the business functions?
And what was the big, we had quite a big transfer of funds, 125,000 or something like that?
Yes, we did. A portion of it is to, once the year starts and the plan or the budget for Title I, Title II, maybe a little bit different than what we did the prior year. I typically, or we typically budget our program budget based upon the prior year. And sometimes that does change, there's some of that in there. There were a few related to contracting out athletic trips, we had to move, since we budgeted money at salary to pay our own staff in order to have an appropriation for contracted, we moved that into contracted services. We had some coding changes in October, PDE or the controller's office issued some account code changes where software is coded to another account, 618 it was, now it's 650, so some of that has to accommodate that. We did a senior high fence, stairway, railing at the stadium, and it was not specific to that particular building. So it's really putting money in the proper account coding is most of it. There was another one, we needed a device for a special ed student, which was not originally budgeted, that came out of the budget reserve. That's general.
Thank you, Dr. Bender. Dr. Bender, personal.
Part A, your resignations, one certificated staff and one extracurricular staff. Part B, we have appointments of certificated substitutes and guest teachers, support staff and support substitutes. Part C is a leave of absence for a certificated staff. Part D, a change of status for a support staff. And finally, party your staff conferences.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Bender. Mrs. Coach.
Student functions, part A, the field captain, Mrs. DeMonge is heading forward and is reporting on those, and then part B, the one that we'd be on, is.
Are there any other items to put up for the board?
Football playoff team on Friday, Mottlesburg, it's going to come to state. Volleyball team, I think, is going to the States. And head field at Green Castle. Also, I attended the Snow White and Seven Doors in the Black Forest on Saturday, it was fantastic, our kids did a super, super job. They involved everybody in the crowd, all the little kids got little things to wave when they were in the Black Forest, and they did a great job.
Black Forest, that's in Germany, isn't it? How do you see that on campus?
I'd like to, we'll adjourn this meeting and then I'd like a few minutes of time to discuss evaluations. It's not executive committee, but one, you're at your place, and there's the four or five different ones that have been brought up. Move to adjourn the workshop. We're adjourned.